Good evening. It is 6:05 PM on Wednesday, January 29th, 2025. I am Brian Leighton, and the school committee chair, and I am calling the special meeting of the school committee to order. Today's our workshop. The first item on the agenda, though, is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up to public comment from the public. Seeing none, I'll open up to public comment from the committee. All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is old business. We do have an action item, the screening committee membership. We had put this on from our last meeting to vote on the membership. Just to give a little bit of background about this, too, there was two memos that went out, or different posts and advertisements about the screening committee, and one of those memos that went out had an incorrect date of the deadline to submit your application by January 31st. So my recommendation would be that we tabled this screening committee membership vote to Saturday, the first. And I had already posted that meeting, so that is available for us to vote, but I'll open it up to discussion.
Did you email applicants and tell them that we would be voting on Saturday?
I did. I did not forward that memo to you, that email to you guys, but I did email all the people who had submitted so far. I reminded them of the correct dates and I reminded, I let them know that we were likely to vote on Saturday because of the conflict.
I'll move to table appointment of the screening committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so next up is the workshop, and this is the majority of our time here, and then we'll finish off with public comment. So in your folders, you will see, I'm just gonna kind of intro this, and then we can kind of get into it. But in the folder, I listed some workshop topics to cover, and it's really just, I kind of put it as like an agenda to serve as a rough outline to guide us through our workshop discussion, and it's intended to help structure the conversation, but we can adjust it and revise it as needed during the meeting to ensure all the key topics and concerns are addressed. We can also take it out of order. It's not really an agenda. It's more of just a list of stuff to hit, but if I missed anything, definitely don't hesitate to jump in. And I think one of the things that we really wanted to talk about, too, was the superintendent characteristics. So that is also in the folder, and it was kind of the first item that we probably could talk about. I did make, so I received all of our ideas and characteristics, and then I tried to consolidate them. And I first started with a really short version, then I was like, oh, maybe it's too short, so then I did a long version. I'm not sure if we should go long or short, and then also, we have to decide what we want to do with that and where we want to go with it. So I will open it up to discussion from there. I think maybe start with the characteristics, but we can obviously bounce around.
Can I ask an awkward question?
Yes, definitely.
Are you running for reelection?
I have not decided yet.
Because if you're not, the two people we have on the superintendent search committee aren't going to be here for the new superintendent. And I was thinking that when I was going through.
Or if I lose in the election as well.
That had not occurred to me. I got faith in you, but if you're not gonna run again, it had occurred to me that when I was talking about communication and the relationship that we're hoping to foster with a superintendent, because I think that's something we want to look for, is how we work together with a superintendent. You're not running for reelection, so you're out of here before the superintendent ever takes office. If you don't run for reelection, you're never gonna see the new superintendent.
They might meet.
Yeah.
I got kids in the school.
Yeah, but it's kind of a weird situation.
So I, this occurred to me when we appointed them, and I think it's, there's two aspects of this. And I'm conscious of the time here because I got a split in an hour, but number one is, they both made themselves available to do this. That's first and foremost, because we had a lot of other things going on right now. Secondly, we do the job while we're in the seat, and the job right now is to find a new superintendent. And we're all in office right now. Might not be tomorrow, day after tomorrow, but today, we're in the seat, and our job is to find a superintendent, and they are operating as a subcommittee on our behalf. So inasmuch as they do their job while they're still in office, which I think they will, the timeline is appropriate, then identify a slate of finalists and bring them to the school committee for a decision to be made, which will include people whose term expires after this, you know, the Fourth of May, or whatever it is that our terms expire, end of May. So I had the same thought. It occurred to me like, oh, we don't have a, you know, but I don't, I honestly don't, our job is to do the job while we're here, and there's five members of the committee right now, and our job is to go find a new superintendent.
Because the working relationship that we're gonna build with the superintendent for the next few years is really important to me, too, that we find someone who's gonna communicate well with us as a board, so that's really important to me. But as long as you guys, like, understand that, and which I know you do, because you've done this before.
And I also just think it's just not me and Carol making the decisions right. It is the whole school committee still making that vote after the screening committee recommends it.
Everybody makes that vote, and everyone has an opportunity to talk to the superintendent. I think I have a very good working relationship with the current superintendent. I was not on the screening committee.
I was not either.
So.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the nature of the beast.
I think that's just how this, but I understand the concern, and I think that it's a reasonable thing to bring up, and it would be a reasonable thing as we talk about characteristics.
Yeah, I wanted to bring it up and keep it in our mind, but it's, I'm not saying I want to make changes.
Yeah, and I think that's the debates we have. We're gonna continue to have this on our agenda, and as things come up, concerns come up, we address them.
I'd like to just, yeah, keep that in mind.
Just tell me.
Because I think there's, you see another school systems where school committees change dynamics, and maybe they don't get along with superintendents. Superintendent may leave, or school committee members may leave, too.
Yeah, but I'd like to focus on getting along. I think it works best when we can have a superintendent back and communicate well.
Yes, you want definitely a good, strong relationship.
Yeah, I think that's a really important one that I'm looking for. These are free, by the way, this list you made for.
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody wants to start on, say, the short version or the long version or anything.
I have to say, as I sheepishly sent my information to you quite late, and.
Did you send it this morning, too?
Yes, yes, and I'm thinking.
I had a good afternoon. It was midterms.
Oh, my goodness, he had so much to put together. I felt so bad, so my apologies. I think, I think to, I don't know, I personally, I would hit the short version. And then if you wanted to look at the longer version, but.
I must be looking at the long version right now.
But the long version.
Short version, surely just bullets, bullet points of the longer version.
Yep, fair enough.
And how much are people gonna read? And my other thought was, we give this to the screening committee, so they have a sense of what we're looking for, but we can give them either or both.
Yeah, I think people tend to have an easier time looking at bulleted lists than.
Were there things that we all definitely hit on? Were there, like, reoccurring themes?
I think they were all really reoccurring things, just people got into more specifics about those key, like, top seven, say. I think not everybody went for resetting expectations for the superintendent role, the seven.
I did not.
So I. But it's the leadership, it's the community, HR.
Two things that I think are, I would like to discuss. The first is, are these in order of priority?
They're nots.
Okay.
But we could.
Well, I think that might be worth a discussion, because I, in my view, in a different time, I might put educational leader to have been in curriculum expertise at the top, but I think that that has been the focus for a number of years now. We've made significant progress on that lever, and we have, in my opinion, lagged in others. And, you know, it may be that we need somebody with strengths that are greater in other areas, such as the leadership management, community engagement topic. The other thing that I wanted to just raise, because I do think it's worth just kind of fleshing out a little bit, is strategic rather than purely operational, which was the first sub-bullet, or the first bullet under number seven. So here's the challenge. I agree that we need a strategic-minded person, because if we don't have a North Star to move to, we are gonna get lost. On the other hand, a lot of the time that we have spent, you know, what I think Tony would call wasted time over the course of the last couple of years, has been due to operational problems that could have been avoided had we had a closer eye on operational issues and closer analytics in some cases on operational functions. And I think that that is an area that needs attention, right? Ranging, and some of these overlap, right? Facilities is a good example, but, I mean, we, we had an athletic advisory committee meeting night before last, and, you know, there are clearly things happening in the athletics program that aren't bad, but we don't have a close handle on them, you know? We don't really know, and we are not able to offer today a degree of detail in terms of what we're spending in some areas and where the efficiencies that we could potentially gain by doing things a little bit more differently or creative, because nobody is really kind of pushing the operational levers and demanding that of our leaders. And I think that that starts at the top, right? That really requires somebody who wants to kind of unpack the operations. So unfortunately, I'm not sure that that jives with strategic first, right? And I don't, I'm not really sure what to do with that.
So I want to say something in response to what Peter said. First thing is, I do think that we have spent a lot of time on operational stuff. I disagree with the cause that you outlined. I think that fundamentally, our problem is we don't have enough money, right? We don't have enough money to hire people. We can't pay enough to attract good people. And so, you know, like, we had like fifteen updates on the elevator last year, and it was just because we just don't have that money. So that's one thing. The second thing that I would want to say is, I think that oftentimes, when I get grouchy, which I shouldn't get grouchy. I'm not grouchy to anybody, by the way. I'm just grouchy that we're spending time. When I get grouchy, it's because I think that the school committee is operating in a role that is different than what is outlined in the charter and what our role is. Like, we are a supervisory oversight committee. We are not a legislative body. And so I think that sometimes we take up issues that we don't properly have the tools to do. Like, we are setting curriculum and overseeing the superintendent. She is making the operational decisions. And so, like, we can know, like, how much things cost, and we can know how much we're spending on certain things, and I think we should. But I think that there are some day-to-day operations that we are asking her to do that are not appropriate for us to be involved in. And I understand that people have a different view of it, but like, if you look at what our legal definition is, like, how are our charges written? We are not designed to, like, take grievances from parents, and obviously, we can do that, and we should do that to some extent. But I feel like we end up chasing our tails on things because we know we don't have enough money to hire these people. We have these complaints, and we get involved at, like, the minutia level, and it doesn't do us any good. The last thing that I will say is, I sent you mine during school committee meeting last week.
Yes.
I think that the two things that happened in the past week have radically changed all of my requirements for a superintendent. The first thing that I would say is, the stop, then start, then stop again on the federal funding has created a really serious problem for educational institutions across the United States. And so that was not something I had contemplated. I did not believe that somebody who was operating in good faith would do what the president did, and I think that that had a direct, or could have a direct impact on us if they get themselves together and actually implement that. And so having essentially a wartime consigliere, to borrow from the Godfather, I want somebody who is capable of dealing with these bigger issues. When you add on that, the fact that they have now said that they will do raids and seizures inside the schools, I think that we need somebody that can say, you know, like, here's our line. If you look at the advice that the Massachusetts Attorney General put forth and our obligations under FERPA, we need somebody who is willing to toe the line, because we are in a different environment than we were a week ago. The things that I thought were unconscionable, that would never happen, that we would never have to worry about, have happened. And then they got messed up, and then, you know, but I think that we can't have somebody, if all our superintendent is worried about is, like, you know, the curriculum and the budget, that would be great. But I think that we are in, we are in for a rough road ahead for at least the next four years. My hope is the next two years, but I think it's going to get much worse before it gets better. If you add on top of that the way in which they're planning on changing Title IX, I think that what, like, our concerns about what we need is important, but I think we're going to soon be confronted with things that are just much bigger than we have any ability to deal with. And so having somebody who has a steady hand and understands what they need to do in terms of our legal obligations will be more important than a lot of the stuff that we really, I mean, like, the blessing thing, right? But like, if we have a, if we have a student that's, you know, subject to an ICE interrogation in the principal's office, that's gonna be, that'll change everybody's dynamic in the entire community. Every, every single person, all of the parents, all of the kids, every single person. And I think that we need to be prepared for that, because, you know, I just don't think that there's enough, I don't think that there's enough we can do to be, I don't think we can be over-prepared. It's gonna get bad. It's gonna get really bad.
So leaving the second half of what you said alone, because I don't disagree with you, but I think that, you know, relative to the drafts that we've seen, I think a lot of that is kind of covered under leadership, right? We need, this is not, this is not curriculum and instruction leadership. This is being able to unpack a situation, a lot of factors, presenting that information to the community and the school committee, making decisions sometimes in absence of guidance, and defending those positions, and leading the organization forward, right? Like, that's leadership, I think, that you just described.
It's never a bad idea to tell people to invoke their rights and be quiet.
Yep. The, I think that the first part of what you talked about, I think we just disagree. I think that we have spent a lot of time on things that are operational gaps, and sometimes operational gaps are not money. The elevator situation was money. It was money, but it was actually a budgeting-ness, is really what it was, right? Like, if a, if a, an earlier facilities director had identified that issue in advance, which should have been identified and budgeted for it, we wouldn't have that problem.
And we needed to know that it was breaking constantly.
And we needed to know in advance, and we needed, it needed to be communicated, and none of that occurred. So it is a money issue, but it's also an operational issue. And I think that there are just a lot, a lot, a lot of examples of where we need to do better in that area. And again, it's not, I'm not criticizing anybody individually. We've had a lot of challenges with turnover and, you know, different core competencies and all that jazz, but we are, we are in a position where I think that operational gaps and inefficiencies could, addressing them could lead to better fiscal management. And secondly, we could find ourselves in situations where we are reacting more because there are more and more gaps, right? And I just, I don't, I don't want to be in reactive mode. I think ultimately, we have the same goal, but I just look at it a little bit differently.
If we're gonna leave in resetting expectations for superintendent role, I think we'd also, we need to have a better balance for the superintendent as far as what we are expecting him or her.
Oh, I agree.
I guess my thought on putting this, too, is that
we need to.
As a new superintendent, they should be setting the expectations of what they want in that role and the relationship. Like, each, I feel like each superintendent is probably gonna have their own relationship with the superintendent.
But I'm not sure we need that on here.
I think we need to tell them, because.
Yes, we.
And maybe that's a post thing.
But I'm not sure we need it on here for the search committee. I think it muddies the waters.
To do post hiring.
Well, so here's my thought. I don't know how it works in Massachusetts. I only practice in New Hampshire. But I can tell you that Kate is, Kate was doing significantly more meetings than anybody else I have ever met as a superintendent.
Agreed.
She was doing way too much stuff. And I think that if we are gonna put something out, and there is, you know, a person that does their due diligence, even if they don't contact Kate, they just look at, like, town meetings and stuff, they're gonna be like, I am never taking this job. And so I think we need to tell people, we do not expect you to do things that are, I mean.
But I think that could be in an interview, that could be in the hiring.
I think it's Anthony.
How do you show that in an application? I mean, this is just the school committee asking, showing what their characteristics, what they're looking for? So I don't know. I kind of agree that maybe it's not the right time for that.
So I, I kind of agree with Tony that if somebody were to look at, I mean, it's easy enough to check YouTube and Google Kate. She's on a million meetings all the time at everything. I don't know what, how you would put into this, how that would, you know, if it would come out in interviews or.
They're at school committee meetings.
It is a lot.
And saying we're gonna change.
I don't think I'm bad enough to say that we're gonna change. I don't, can we rank these and then see where it was resetting?
Can I just go back to something Tony said?
Sure.
I, I think under number six, strategic decision-making and visionary leadership, I'm not sure that's where it would go, but understanding, anticipating, and reacting to changing state and federal policies.
Yeah, I really do think that there's a chance we will get funding.
Because there is a chance a lot of this funding would get pulled.
Maybe after meeting deadlines and adhering to legal requirements.
I agree that that should be in here somewhere, and I'm not, not to be like, you know, the sky is falling, but if it does, we need to have somebody watching that.
The bits of the sky are falling on your head.
They're already trying to pull the sky down. Well, it's not just, so what you just said, Carol, can you repeat, understanding?
I said, understanding, anticipating, I don't know if that's a good word, and reacting, which I'd rather be pro-reactive, but sometimes you have to react, reacting to changing state and federal policies.
So I'm reminded of, and I don't know exactly how to phrase this, but I'm reminded of what Tony said about being a wartime consigliere, right? I was in the Army. We did sand table drills all the time, right? A sand table drill is, okay, you're moving your, you know, you're moving your team here, okay, you know, enemy fire comes from over here, how do you react, right? And you literally, it's a table exercise. Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's an exercise to kind of work through scenarios of what you would do. And I think that, I think that that is something that actually would benefit us if we could do it in a way that is thoughtful and relatively transparent, you know, like, there's a time and a place to
There's a time, yeah.
to reveal your thinking, but I think that there's a, I think that we do need somebody who can think through that, right? Like, we need somebody, I was involved in an email conversation with Brian yesterday, right? Like, in my view, when what happened on Monday happened, we needed a statement immediately saying, this is how much money we get from the federal government, right? Just being transparent, right? Like, this is it.
Why?
So that, so that, but people want to know, they can find the information, right? Like, it just, what's at risk, right? I didn't anticipate it. I don't think anybody else at this table anticipated that we would need to do that, but we do need somebody who can kind of think through the, okay, should I do this, should I not do it, and why, and communicate that, right? And I, I think that we do need somebody who has that level of agility. I guess is the word I'm looking for, right? And it's not, I mean, this is a hard job. The other point, though, that I think we should discuss and kind of come to some level of expectation amongst us is, I agree with what you said about just, like, ways of working and volume and capacity and those kinds of things. I think that those are real issues. I, but I'm somebody who works in tech, and I change companies every three or four years and change jobs probably every year, on average, right? So I am constantly working with new teams, new bosses, different projects, those kinds of things. And it's very important that every time that a change occurs, that you're as transparent and open and communicative as you possibly can be about what the expectations are of the individual, what they are capable of delivering relative to those expectations, and constantly adjusting. And I think that this is a public job, so it's a little bit harder to do that than me just sitting in my boss's office, as I did this morning, but, but we have to find a mechanism to do that to some degree, right? And, and one of the reasons why I think that, you know, Kate took so many meetings and worked so darn hard, and, and, you know, was on the verge, in my view, of, we would have and could have burned her out.
I think we did.
We did. Let's be honest. Is, is, number one, hiring and retaining people, right? It's a leadership thing, and holding them accountable, right? And sometimes that's a money issue, making sure that they're well compensated, they're not going anywhere, they're happy. Like, we, we ran into significant gaps last year, and as a result of that, she had to overcompensate, because she couldn't rely on some of the people that she had, and some of the other people were gone. And, and I think that that is, you know, so some of this is looking to the characteristics of the candidate, but it's also communicating expectations and recalibrating as needed.
What if instead of saying something like, we're expecting you to reset expectations, we would just say something in the post about understanding the importance of work-life balance? I think that that's like a code.
So I think you're kind of connecting back to like a job posting now, where I feel like this is different. This is just the characteristics of what the school committee is looking for versus.
Maybe.
Maybe the external, if it's an external job posting.
I just don't think we need it on there, which I think we need to talk about it and hear it and keep it in mind, but I don't think.
The workshop in May-June.
We definitely need a maze of working.
We put that in a different document.
Exercise with whoever we hire.
And it's important we keep it in mind.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
But I don't think we need it to tell the search committee, but it is important, and I'm glad it got noted.
So are we good with deleting seven?
Well, move it somewhere else, but not, yeah. Don't delete it, because I think it's important.
I'll save it as a different file.
So can we rank these?
Yes, we can rank it, and do we want to add Carol's line under six?
Because I do think that goes under.
And if somebody has better language.
Go ahead, let me pop it in there, and I'll write it, and then we can spit all of it in.
I have, understanding, anticipating, and reacting to changing state and federal policies.
And I don't think I can play with the live version, but I will save this separate version up a little later. That's, that's, looks good to me. Understanding, anticipating, and reacting to changing state and federal policies.
It's not exactly how I think of it, but I'd probably add like four sentences to, yeah.
But it's not even just state and federal policies, right? It's like.
It's changing conditions.
Conditions, yeah. How about reacting to changing conditions, including state and federal policies?
Yeah, I would want that in there.
Local state and federal policy?
Local, yeah.
Local, state, and federal policies, because you deal with the local
Powers that be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, okay.
All right, so do we wanna prioritize now? We can put it in order, and maybe we can put a title, title superintendent characteristics and qualifications in order? In order of priority, in order of
It's a hard one. I definitely think I can't remember what I prioritized. I feel like
I didn't prioritize.
Look at your first line.
Yeah, I feel like I kind of
I think I would reverse one and two.
I was gonna say
Yeah, I feel like we're good with curriculum. We have a curriculum director.
Yeah, but the educational, I want the educational background, I think, with classroom experience and the ability to give
Yeah, but if that's under number two, that's still there. How happen the deal?
Switching one and two.
If you switch one and two
At least a start, that's a good start.
Oh, I started off with the budget.
Yeah, I mean, we can move the budget as well. I'm just saying, let's start with one and two.
Yeah, so one of Kate's, Dr. Runham's strengths that I really valued was her ability to hold, not the whole budget in her head, but the levels of the budget. She always had a pretty good handle on what was going on at the levels, and sometimes things could change and you could see in her mind, her moving.
Her moving things, yeah.
They were like marbles, and it's like a Rube Goldberg machine of moving things.
Can I just, I just wanna say this. I don't have a problem with moving it down to number two, but I think that having a focus, I want this next person to be a data-driven, curriculum-focused person, because that is the only proven way to increase student achievement.
But do we have that underneath the superintendent currently? I feel like we have the staffing there. It already has.
But I still want them, like, this is like, I don't know, if you're like a baseball team and your general manager's like, eh, do what you want. I want Billy Bean. I want that person who is rigorous, scientific, and focused on results, but that's what we do. That's the goal of the school committee.
I don't. I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I almost think I want the leader, and then they have their hires, hirees that do the work, like the finance, I feel like that's the finance director. Yeah, I guess, I guess the problem, I guess the problem with Billy Bean, to drop from that analogy, is they never won anything, and they, they can't draw a crowd. So, you know what I mean? Like, they're doing, yeah, but I mean, you know, they're working the numbers, but you still have to lead, you know?
I want someone who can also focus on qualitative data and balance the needs of the student along with the needs of getting the data. I don't want someone whose only obsession is the data. I want someone who can balance the needs of the student, too.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think it's important to state that, because I think sometimes with the superintendent role, or people who are, have been an admin a long time, I think some of those people are very data-driven, and I want someone who can also know that these are children in our schools, and that the data is not always the most important thing.
But I was gonna say, maybe it's not
I think that comes out in the interview.
We're touching on number two here, too. Maybe it's not about prioritizing them. Maybe they're all really important to them.
Maybe they're all important, maybe there's no need to prioritize. I didn't need to prioritize.
I really think that
That might be too much.
Okay.
And it may, and maybe that's the, you know, particularly for the screening committee. I can tell you, like, in my mind,
All right.
I completely understand where you're at, Tony. That's not where the priority is in my head right now. And I just think because we've overcorrected in that, well, not overcorrected, but we've super corrected in that area, and we're lagging in others.
We also haven't done listening sessions with teachers. We don't know what the staff want. We don't know if there are
But I think each individual on this committee and also on the screening committee are all gonna have their own priorities, and you can, and I think sharing priorities, that's good, and then you can get that feedback, take it in, and then decide what you wanna do.
Well, the screening committee, like, you kind of ask, need to ask them to look for certain things.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think this is a pretty good list to give them.
That's where this is gonna be used.
Is there anybody else who wanna give them? And it sounds like we're doing the shortlist, the short version, keep it simple, and they can
I just think it's easier for people to have the short.
And they'll have their own priorities. All right. Is there anything else we wanna go with this?
But I appreciate the effort.
No, I think this was, and I
I felt bad taking away so much stuff, so it's like, all right, give me another version.
No, but, you know, Brian, I, I kind of threw this on you in public comment a week ago, and here we are.
I was almost gonna say it tonight.
This is commendable. This is really good. And I sincerely appreciate you taking the time to do this and get us together and
Can I just point out one thing under number five?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
The word inclusive may be something that puts a target on our back, again, for federal funding, and so I think I'm happy to put a target on my back if it means standing up for the right cause. I do not care, right? However, I want to make that a conscious decision, right? We expose ourselves, like, if you look at the federal, the language of the freeze, it specifically targeted this word.
Okay.
And so should we take it out?
What word?
Inclusive.
No, what word can we use instead?
I don't know. That's what I, again, I don't know what the word should be. I just wanna make sure that we are making a conscious decision. If we wanna put it in and leave it in and tell them, "Bring it on," fine.
Well, I don't, so, so, what are, what are we signing up for here? I mean, this is a, this is
This is just a
On demo.
This is a policy.
The federal government is not gonna see this case.
This isn't policy. This is, yeah, I mean, I, so, so here's how I would think of it, and, and I think this is fodder for a much longer conversation over a longer period of time. I want educational professionals who do think about being inclusive.
I agree.
And that that is part of their thought process, and to the extent, to, to a, to a reasonable extent, decision-making process. And, and reasonable meaning considering all of the factors around them, right? I, particularly when we're dealing with children who may not feel included in today's day and age, and all of the ramifications that that leads to, I would, today, I would still want to overcorrect for inclusivity, and, and that is not a matter of policy, that is a matter of preference for me. And, and I'm okay with that.
If there's no objections, we'll send the revised short version to everyone, and also we'll bring it to the screening committee.
Okay. Did we wanna have the longer one, too, or not at all?
Sounds like, no.
I did wanna also focus on someone who's
TLDR.
I mean, it's the same thing, just more words, right?
Yeah, it's just a lot.
Someone who gives it to us straight.
But I think also, again, this is our ideas coming in, and then we're still gonna have our school committee to decide.
And a lot of that kind of thing comes out in the interview.
Yep.
I mean, if you give somebody a paper that say, "I'm looking for someone who's honest and trustworthy," they're gonna play that game. If, if you, if you tell them that was the expectation ahead of time. When you speak with somebody, you know where their passion is. When we interviewed Kate, we knew where her passion was. You can't hide that. It's who you are, you know?
And
They can hide it from you. Again, it's really a two-part process, right? It's just the screening committee, and then they still have to go
And candidates are normal. A good candidate is going to do their research, as our new town manager did, and bring thoughts and ideas relative to what they have seen from us.
And that's fine.
It's welcome. It's absolutely welcome.
Absolutely. I agree.
So next one was, I thought planning listening sessions would be a good idea to plan next. So my thought was to schedule different listening sessions, one for staff, and one, or not one, but sessions for staff, sessions for the public. We can determine the format, but I feel like it should be just, my initial thought is an open format. Identifying facilitators, how the, how the feedback will be documented, we should discuss, and then booking and publicizing the sessions. So my thought is each individual members could, again, be a facilitator. If you wanna partner up, that would be, again, okay, but tripling up would be probably a bad idea, so we don't do a public meeting. Locations, I feel like you could do it in the school if you wanna reserve a room, but I think you could even do it at the coffee shop or whatever. And then advertising, my thought was you could have the superintendent have a blast out. We could also post it on Facebook. And if we're not sure about dates and times, I think we can coordinate through me, once you get yours booked. And I can get that out to everybody, so we don't double book at the same time, and we just make sure that we do at least one for staff and one for the public.
Okay.
What if we did this? Let's do one for staff and one for public, and then have a backup.
Well, I'd like to do at least two for staff, because, especially at the middle high school, they'll do in the afternoons, and if they're doing after-school clubs or sports or something. So I was thinking a morning one, and then maybe an afternoon one, or evening one, because I want it to be convenient for them.
I think convenience would be great, right?
I think, yeah.
That works.
I really wanna listen, because I really wanna
Because the problem with the morning one, though, is the morning for the people here is, it won't be me that does that. It's so incredibly early
Yeah.
as compared to what it would be, because usually morning one at the elementary.
I could do something like that in the morning.
Um, did you talk to
No, so that was the other part, too, if we wanted to reach out to the LEA leadership, too, to let them know that we're doing it, and try to coordinate.
And see what they think, because they know when they can get their people.
I'm wondering if the LEA has a suggestion.
That's actually a really good point.
Convenient.
You know, they know how it works.
Yeah, maybe I wanna sit in, too.
My only request would be from my perspective. Between budget, what we're doing here, capital planning, which I'm going to right after this, like, I'm just worried about my availability. Do we record these or make sure we get really good notes?
Well, I do not wanna record, because I don't, I think
Take notes. I mean, we take notes. I wouldn't take down names. I would just take notes.
I don't wanna take down names. I just wanna write down what people say, and I wanna
I just wanna make sure whatever, whatever good ideas are captured, I'd like to
And give it back to the committee, and then me and Carol can also bring it to the screening committee. So there's something that we'd wanna do.
Yeah.
I'll volunteer to do ones for the staff, if you want, if you wanna do that.
I'd very much like to do one for the staff.
Yeah, and I can do one for the public.
I can do whatever, whatever, nobody else can fit in. I can probably fit in something, like, soon.
Exactly. I think within the next ten days.
So what would work best for staff? Like, Brian, if you had one at your school, what would be?
I think after school is at least an option, otherwise, yeah, maybe a weekend or something like that, right?
Like, right after?
The trick is you gotta work
Do we wanna ask them?
Yeah.
I think you should ask Mary.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you gonna text them?
This is why I think you gotta kind of, it's a coordination effort.
Tony's gonna text Mary and ask her.
All right, and then we'll
And things like that.
Yeah, because I'd like
Because she would have the idea of when they show up.
Yeah, and I
And I
But if you, if you can coordinate it through me, whatever you finalize, that's fine. That way at least I can know that we hit every, we hit the staff, we hit the public.
Yeah, and then
Just so we can
You wanna do a public one?
And I can do a public one, yeah.
I'm happy to do whatever one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
And I think I want to fit with your schedules, too, at the same time, so we can actually get it done.
Um, the public one you can schedule now if you want.
Yeah, well, I just gotta look at my calendar, but I'm like, yeah, I'll just do it. I'm thinking I'll contact the coffee shop, the roasters or something, and I got a busy schedule, what else could I do?
Go to the father, no, the, the
Yeah, set aside some time, then. That would be a good public
Legal guardian dance, I call it like forty-five.
What do you call it?
The legal guardian dance.
That is the most boring name ever.
It's the, yeah, it's terrible.
Does everybody feel comfortable being able to set one up if they're, if they're able? I know if you're not able, that's fine, but set it up, it just bounced back to me.
The minor illegal
And if you wanna use school space, just contact Kate or Liz, and they can help with reserving a room.
Yeah, and then what I'll do is, is I'll wait, when people contact you, whatever hole there is, I can just do whatever.
I can let you know where there's some availability.
Because I don't mind, I'm doing it myself. I don't care.
What we do, I think it's important that whoever's facilitating it, we make it clear that it's about the future.
Yeah.
It's not about the past.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
It's not about bashing leadership of the past. It's not like about complaining about current leadership, as cathartic as that might be to do. Uh, because we wanna focus on the future and hopes on the future, so if it ends up going that direction, just a quick reminder to people to
It kind of reminds me of the desired characteristics and qualifications. What are you looking for in a superintendent?
Yeah, like, what are you looking for, or what changes, or what direction does this giant cruise ship need to head in? Or what would you like to see, or, you know, what is affecting your ability to do your job?
So I could do something on the fifth, and I could do something on
Leave school committee on the fifth.
I know.
That's fine. You could do it in the morning, afternoon, or the afternoon. I'm assuming I gotta do it in the afternoon.
And I could do something on the seventh.
I can do the seventh. You really wanna make teachers stay after school on Friday?
No. No, I have no desire to do that, but I'm just saying, like, availability. Because the third, I mean, I guess I could do it on the third, but I don't think anybody's gonna be able to get together that
And if you just contact me, too, I can, I can even reach out to Kate and say, "Get this out to the public."
Did Mary get that, too?
No.
Any, any thought of how it would What about, I don't know how it works here currently. I don't know how it works at your school. I know I never could have done it as a teacher, because I never ate lunch. I just got ready for math. I mean, there was no time. Do teachers actually have time to go to the teacher's room and have lunch?
Not at my school, but I don't know. I think that's hard.
Okay, I didn't think so either. I didn't, because you can't sit in the lunchroom and say, "What are you thinking?" And just be very, um
Yeah, but do they really want the school committee sitting
Right, right. I know, but they would know what's there.
That's why I like saying, "We're gonna be here if you'd like to come to us." That's my thought.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't do that in a group.
I'd be okay with just coming during lunch and saying, "Come"
Come over here.
Yeah, that's true. I will not
You know, I would have just sit there.
If anybody wants to come by.
Okay.
But if anybody, I don't know if that, I don't know if people have time to do that. I wouldn't have.
Another thought, another thought here, too, particularly when it comes, well, for any of these audiences. We ought to invite public written comment as well, because people are, may not wanna, either have a, like, I get really, so, real crazy social anxiety, one-on-one with people I don't know, and
You do?
I do, yeah.
Wait, for real?
I actually do, yeah. I'm great with meeting of multiple people, but small groups, not my thing.
Are you? Oh, are you serious?
Yeah, yeah. True, completely, completely true, yeah. Small groups, not my thing. So, so I, like, if you were sitting in a teacher's room, I wouldn't really feel comfortable just walking up and telling you what I think, right? So, but, but I would write it to you and say, "This is what I think."
But like, if you were in a public meeting, it'd be fine if you went up to the
But in a public meeting, five hundred people in the room doesn't bother me at all. It's just a thing. It's just a question. Everybody's different.
Everybody has different
I think that's awesome, okay.
So, for whatever that's worth.
No, I like that.
Now, if I know you, it's a whole other thing.
Some people can't make it.
Okay. No, different ways of letting
Different ways of communicating. I just think we should
Stuff like to be anxiety, doing that.
No, that's fantastic, and letting people, because I just
We could do that, too.
I think the more community buy-in we have on this process, the better, the easier we're gonna make it for the superintendent when they come in, if people feel like their voice was heard.
Yes, I agree.
Especially
And more willing for the public to accept it.
Especially with the teachers.
There we go. All right, anything else on the listening sessions?
Um, and when you do it, like, if you do the public, like, don't be on the stage at the auditorium or something, like
I'm just gonna be sitting there drinking coffee.
Just, just so you know, like, don't, don't turn this into like
No, exactly, very relaxed.
We get them to gavel, gavel.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Make everyone call you Mr. Chairman.
All right, next was the internal and external search options. Want to review the internal hiring process. So again, it's going to the screening committee. They're gonna be meeting on Monday. They're gonna review the, right, currently there's two applicants, and go through that, and then they'll set up interviews, and then give feedback to the school committee, whether
Posted the internal hiring, did you run it by our HR director for the legal language to make sure it
No, it was very
Fit Massachusetts state laws for hiring?
No, it was just a basic job posting, similar to the language used in the last posting for the superintendent.
Was it the same, like, was it, was it copy-pasted from the last one?
It was pretty close, yeah. It was a lot of taken-away stuff, a lot of stuff taken away.
Okay.
There was no concerns. I think Kate, Kate looked it over.
Kate looked it over, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, I'm a little concerned.
Didn't have a lawyer look it over, but, yeah.
It'll be fine. I'll take this last word.
Don't love that attitude.
It was nothing, yeah.
I think that's pretty straight.
And that's specifically for the internal
That's a pretty straight. I wouldn't do that with an external, but with the internal, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm a little nervous that we're doing this
Two applicants currently.
Without a professional overseeing it because of the situation, and without an HR person guiding the internal search. And I would like to advocate that we bring on MASC still, because I'm still not sure what the laws are regarding internal searches, and I'm worried about running afoul of them.
When we spoke to Glenn Kucher, he said, "You can do what you want."
So I also will add to
We can ask them if they're planning on getting pregnant anytime soon, and
Well, no, obviously not. That's against the law.
But that's different than a posting, right?
That's different than a post.
And I think with the interview committee, so I've sat on interview committees for coaches and teachers. I've never done it for a superintendent, but it's that idea that the questions, every interview I've ever done is always the questions are already written down. They've already been decided. These are the questions. And also on the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design, the questions are already pre-written.
You can't stray.
Everybody's, okay, you're not strained from it. This is the list of questions.
Um, I'm fine with the path that we're on right now. I, I think at the point where we decide that we're gonna do a public posting, I do think that we need to bring in the MASC. I think that that's the, I think that that's the pivot.
I agree with that as well.
I do, too.
I agree with that as well.
If we, because, I mean, the reality is, is that if we hire an internal candidate, then this isn't If we, because, I mean, the reality is, is that if we hire an internal candidate, then this isn't, it, it'd be, it's admittedly a more insular process. Right? If we don't hire an internal candidate, we have certainly given our internal candidate pool the opportunity to be seen and heard. I hope we interview all applicants for internal candidates, that would be my hope.
I would hope.
And, and, and we are also leaving open the option to encourage an internal candidate that is not selected to remain in contention as part of an external search, right? So, in my mind, like, we're doing.
They would be capable.
And in my mind, that is, that's the appropriate path. And at that point, at that pivot point where we say, okay, we do wanna take a look at external candidates, I think then we bring in the MASC and say, let's.
I agree.
I agree.
Let's talk with them, follow their recommendations, we've got, we will have a screening committee already assigned and we can go to work.
So the other part was the HR and legal considerations, review procedures to ensure compliance with hiring laws and best practices, discuss potential legal risks and strategic strategies to risk mitigation. So I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add to that.
Did you write strategic strategies?
Strategies for risk mitigation, potential legal risks.
Okay.
But I think, yeah, I think we're on the right track and, like, I think me and Carol feel pretty comfortable with going into the screening committee that we're gonna set the questions, it's not gonna be random, that people are gonna ask whatever they want.
No, and, and you have to follow.
And there are several people that we are hoping to put on the screening committee that have also that additional experience that have done that as well.
Yeah, I did notice that we had a number of applicants who have done this specific process before, and we had a few applicants who've done other search.
Yeah, so I'm excited about that.
Like, an extensive history of search committees.
So, people have done this and.
So I think, I feel comfortable legally that we're gonna be following the right procedure.
Good. Excellent.
Uh, the next one was application review in initial candidate pool and voting procedures, so overview of the applications received so far. So we have over twenty received so far for the screening committee and then two applicants for the superintendent position, interim position so far.
Did you skip over number four, or screening committee structure?
Yeah, you might have.
I might have, yeah, I think we can jump to the HR.
Because I have listed out.
From the internal, clarify expectations and responsibilities of the screening committee. So, again, the screening committee is really just to screen the candidates and then make recommendations, whether they recommend both, none, one, to the school committee, that's the expectation, it's open-ended, the screening committee can do what they want and make their recommendations of what they want. That, we don't, we're not gonna set their expectations.
Did you wanna talk about makeup, or how is, how, you guys were gonna bring us a slate, because I'm.
We will, we will bring a slate as a subcommittee, we're going to go through all the applications.
Well, if you guys are a subcommittee, you can't talk without it being a publicly posted meeting.
It is, it is a public.
It is posted, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep, we made sure.
So the concern I had too was when.
We went through MASC and got direction on how to do it appropriately.
When do we pop that in the folder for you guys to look at, is my question too, because we do have a potential deadline of the thirty-first where people can still apply, so our list could change if more people apply. I wouldn't go out and recommend people start applying at this point, because it's kind of like it should be done today, but.
Do we suggest recommendations to you based on?
That would have to wait, I believe, till Saturday for changes to our recommendations, or to come up with a list.
Yeah. To changes to our recommendations. Because otherwise, that's three people.
You could recommend on Saturday to come up with a new list.
So, just bear with me here, like, I know this is minutia, but.
It is very strange.
You guys, you guys have your subcommittee meeting tonight.
Yes.
Somebody lobs in an application on Friday, that you guys are like, oh, we gotta have this guy, right? So now you've got your recommendation and then you've got this other application, so you need to show up at our meeting on Saturday morning and say, are we both good?
So we might have a posted meeting on Saturday as another meeting, just.
I don't know that they can, because it's not a, it's not a posted subcommittee.
Right, just to. Okay, you might wanna do that, I'm just, I just think it's worse.
It's too late to post it.
Can I post a Thursday?
It's Wednesday and town hall's closed on Friday.
You can post tomorrow morning. You can post tomorrow morning.
The town hall's closed on.
You can post tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And it's the one for, uh.
For Saturday meeting.
As long as it's forty-nine hours in advance.
Yep.
So forty-nine hours, okay, so I will post.
Even if it's town.
Yeah, it's a whole thing, just the case.
Oh, no, I.
Otherwise, we're doing. That's the worst, we could do it publicly.
Yeah, I, I know that, I know that face.
Bend down that road.
That's the, I am absolutely right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. If we know of external candidates that would be qualified and interested.
You'd have to wait.
Okay.
That's my thought, because we are posting currently for.
For superintendent.
Yeah.
For the superintendent?
Yeah.
That would have to wait. Alright, any other questions or concerns about the screening committee? Any other discussion on the screening committee?
I'm just, yeah, because, okay.
And again, that's why we have the Saturday meeting for us to, as a committee, decide if we wanna rearrange the group that Carol and Brian recommend.
And if you don't like what we did, then you can change it.
I know, but then it turns into kicking people off the subcommittee.
Well, we're not gonna publishly, we're not gonna publicly state those names until we're ready to make that motion.
But you will, because you'll have. But you will, because you'll have a meeting tonight, will you, will have.
It's executive session.
It's executive session?
And Saturday morning before our meeting will also be executive session, so the names will not be out there.
Totally fine, I'm not worried.
We're trying to do this as discreetly as possible, so people aren't thrown around in the public.
We'll follow in what MASC said to do.
Totally fine.
I just wanted to make sure that we were being respectful of the people who volunteered.
That's why we wanna do this and not in the public meeting.
Absolutely, that's why we're doing it that way.
Okay, I was, okay, just wanted to make sure we're being respectful of people.
And like we said, if we don't like the order, we can change it as a committee of five, we decide in the screening committee, we're just gonna have a recommendation.
Then that's fine, okay, I didn't realize, okay, I just.
Good, no, this is good, this is why we have a committee of five, so we can make sure everything's taken care of.
That's why we're doing this.
Thanks for crossing the teeth on that.
This is good, exactly.
It's important to do it.
It is very important.
It is important to do it right.
Alright, um, I lost track.
Sorry.
So I think we're at seven, interview process and question screening, structured list of interview questions, we can talk about.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, boy.
Oh, we didn't do six.
Application review, initial candidate pool and voting procedure.
So I think we talked about the applicants so far?
Nope, overview of applications received so far.
Yeah, so I said we had twenty plus for the screening and then two for the superintendent.
Right.
Do we expect one is later incomplete?
So the later incomplete applications, we didn't talk about that.
That would be for the superintendent, because.
I think for both, I think.
We don't have applications for, for the screening committee, they wrote a letter.
Well, the letters, the letters, but if somebody comes in after the thirty-first, no, but I think we accept them for the thirty and the thirty-first.
They, we will accept them up to the thirty-first.
We'll say no on the first.
I really think that's only fair, because.
It is only fair.
Because of that memo, yeah.
And we took, right away, we knew.
And then for the superintendent, if they pass the deadline, we will not accept the applicant, that's my thought, just wanted to make sure we're all good with that.
Yep, if you can't get it in on time, you can't do the job.
And then discussion on voting for screening committee, we just had that discussion.
When is the due date for this, the internal posting, when was, when is the due date for the superintendent?
I would have to check, but I believe it is the thirty-first.
Oh, boy.
I can double-check, I have it.
Did you guys already say how big the screening committee is gonna be?
Twelve.
Twelve total.
We have twelve.
We have twenty-two.
Did you guys, like, come up with a makeup of?
So.
I've categorized people every which way.
So for.
So last time you had, like, it was eleven people or something?
Four PM, January twenty eighth, so we are, we are closed.
The parents.
Yep, okay.
We are closed, we have two applicants.
Okay. For interview process and question screening, this is something that the screening committee needs to, the screening committee needs to determine the interview questions, is that?